Get the meeting started. Evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, April twenty first, two thousand twenty. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconferencing pursuant to one MRSA subsection four zero three dot A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID nine one six three zero five one forty one hundred and password zero four eight nine one seven. Or the computer and all the sort of identifying numbers are on our website on the agenda posted in the calendar this evening. Members of the public may also submit comments via email to info at SanfordMaine.org. Great. Thank you for the pledge of allegiance. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call. Council Hanselman.
Here.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
Council Tuttle.
Here.
Council Lanigan.
Present.
Council Hurley.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip. Deputy Mayor Hanslip? He must be popping the popcorn. I know he's around. Okay, hi, my name is Tom Cody, Mayor of Sanford. Welcome. Joining me tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his executive assistant is Larissa Ricketts. Minutes nineteen dash eight seventy nine dot zero one. Aura to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held on April seventh, twenty twenty. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, we'll do roll call. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Present.
Council Lanigan? Yeah, it's he, right? Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
Also a yes. We have six approvals and one present. No, just kidding. That's carry seven to zero. All right. Mayor's report this evening, I guess the only thing really to report is I still continue to get a number of emails and questions as it relates to COVID nineteen and just try to disperse information as best I can and provide feedback to the city manager and city staff where applicable. City Manager Buck, do you plan on talking about the downtown presentation that was provided last week?
Oh, no, I did not have that matter report this evening. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So several of us, I know there's a bunch of counselors in attendance as well. We had a meeting on Thursday evening as it relates to the downtown initiatives and planning partnership with the state and our consultants. And the consultants really drove the conversation in relation to, you know, our vision for the downtown, traffic flows, signals, directions, what it should look like. You know, the character and the culture of the community. It was a really, really good conversation, lots of participation. I thought that was a really interesting evening and it was, it was an evening, it was probably two and a half hours, but we dove into very specific sections of downtown. And I think overall, the feedback was strong. There was a big, there was a big group that participated. There had to have been, you know, over forty people at certain times during the evening, which is, you know, as we know, these meetings are pretty lightly attended usually. So that Zoom format really helped out in that, in that conversation. So kudos to all that were in attendance and to those who drove that meeting and, you know, sort of held a pretty tight ship and got us through a long agenda. So that was great. And I think that's all I had on my mayor's report. Any subcommittee reports this evening?
Yes, zoning did meet last Thursday. And we discussed for second reading the amendment to two eighty for zoning regarding membership. There was no, really no discussion, no change. The, there were no comments. No one came to the subcommittee meeting and commented. And the council members on the committee were still unanimous in their support of that amendment. I believe that's on the agenda tonight for second reading. We also discussed the proposed amendment of chapter two eighty zoning. What, to make things brief, for the cultivation of recreational marijuana, adult use marijuana. Once again, in advance of the meeting, I did send a copy of this out to council members and hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that. I know there's going to be opportunity for plenty of discussion on this as we move ahead. I just want to say once again that this was, the three counselors on zoning were unanimous in their support for this. We also received a progress report from Beth Della Valley on the city's comprehensive plan. I think to summarize it very quickly, it's not moving probably as fast as everyone would like it to move the update on the city's comprehensive plan. And that has a lot to do with some personnel issues. And we've had some people leave and we've got some people coming on board and but Beth is still hopeful that she can catch up in over a short period of time and, and get this project done for us.
Okay, so, thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? All right. See, now we'll turn over to the city manager.
Okay, I'm going to pull up the report. Sorry, I didn't send this out earlier. I'll pull it up for your visual right now. So what I wanted to do this evening is, this is the coronavirus update as of April twenty first. I've copied the type of information that's being reported out to the city council and department managers daily. I went over this information with Adam Hartwick. He works for the Maine CDC. He's our local representative. We were talking about this information earlier today and I did make an inquiry to Adam if he had heard anything as to when the timing that the governor might be saying more to us about reopening criteria, about the federal standards that were posted and how that relates to Maine. He was not yet aware as of today when, when that might be. So, so for the viewing public's benefit, this is what the city council is seeing on a daily basis. And this information is from actually yesterday, Monday. But the daily increase, this is the graph that shows the daily increase. So yesterday, Monday was a, was a good day, if there is such a thing with this virus. There was only eight new cases statewide are reported. And you can see that since since four thirteen, we've been on this downward projection. This sixty-five that was reported, that was the day that a lot of the convalescent, the long-term elderly facilities reported out a widespread number of cases inside of their facilities. But it's been decreasing as far as the daily increase ever since that point in time. We also look at our local hospital, SMHC, reports to us nearly on a daily basis. They're part of our emergency management calls now, as is York Hospital as well. So they report out to us data sets that we see. So as of yesterday, they had six COVID nineteen positive patients inside of SMHC. There were two persons of under investigation, a PUI is a person under investigation. So they haven't, haven't been diagnosed, but they're exhibiting the symptoms. So likely their tests are out, but haven't come back yet. I know there was eight hundred and seventy-five cases as of yesterday. And that COVID test in the last twenty-four hours at SMHC were eighteen in total. They had one healthcare worker that was tested in that twenty-four hour period. The Bitterford testing sites saw four patients, all four were tested. Sanford Testing Site saw six patients, of which five were tested. So we see these numbers on a daily basis. So we use the hospital information to help us further assess where we're at as far as the pandemic is concerned. This next graph is a graph of the, the blue bars are the main cases. So the, as the total counts go up, we're at eight hundred and seventy-five as of yesterday, I think eight hundred and eighty-eight today. You can see the orange bars are those cumulative cases for York County. So you can see us in relationship to the rest of the state. And we are about twenty, the York County is about twenty percent of the state's overall COVID cases throughout. We also look at the York County stats specifically. Again, the blue bars is the total number of cases in York County. So you can see it hit a hundred and eighty the other day, a hundred and eighty-one. I can't remember which. The orange bars are the total number that are in York County hospitals. And you can see since roughly four ten, we've been at either thirty-five or thirty-six patients in York County hospitals, all hospitals combined over that period of time. So it's been relatively stable. You might have heard the governor of New York talking about the plateau. We've hit our plateau. And the concern is how long is the length of this plateau before we start seeing these cases go below thirty-six and start decreasing downward over the next period of days is what we're hopeful for. And the other line of significance here is this gray line that's on the graph. This is showing the number of documented recoveries. You can see that starting to escalate far more rapidly than the number of new cases. So that's a very positive sign for us. We still wonder at this point if the documented number of recoveries, I keep saying documented, documented number of recoveries will ever meet the total case count for, for York County in that there are many patients that in order to be part of this total number count, you have to be diagnosed as having COVID nineteen. So that starts the tracking of you. If you're an individual that experienced little to no symptoms, you've been asymptomatic, you may drop off from your primary care provider. If you stop a level of communication with a PCP, that determination of when you've actually recovered and having that reported back to the state may not be true for all cases. So we're just, we're curious as to if we're ever going to see the number of recovered cases hit the number of, of reported case. But you can see that that's a very positive trend that we're getting at a rapid rate of recovery at this point in time. Let's see. So as, I'd also note in here that the total number of reported cases, recovered cases are fifty percent. More than fifty percent of the cases that have been documented are now reported as being recovered. Altering here without getting into all the criteria, the federal guidelines were published by President Trump last Friday, Thursday, I'm sorry, last Thursday. I put a link in here as to how to find the opening America again. You can find those criteria. I did a self-evaluation from what we're seeing for data sets. There's what is called the gating criteria. So the federal government is encouraging that this gating criteria be met before you enter into phase one, two, or three of a reopening criteria pursuant to those suggested rules. First of the gating criteria is, is you have to have fourteen days of downward influenza-like infection. That's what the ILL stands for. Fourteen days of downward trajectory reported. So they're not just including COVID cases in here. It's any COVID or influenza-like infection. They want to see fourteen days on a downward trajectory. We're in an eight-day phase of that. So we're getting there. They want to see a downward trend of COVID nineteen syndromeic cases reported over fourteen days. So we have not yet hit that. We're still seeing a, an increase, although vastly slower increase what we were seeing before. They want to see a downward trajectory, trajectory of positive cases over the last fourteen days. Not yet achieved that. They want to see hospitals treating all cases without crisis care. So I'm, I'm not yet sure as to the interpretation of that. I haven't had the chance to inquire. Does that, does that mean ICU? Or that there's sufficient capacity within hospitals to deal with the number of COVID impacted cases that they're seeing? If it's without crisis care, in other words, they don't have to go beyond their normal ICU bed capacity. We have never hit that anywhere in York or Cumberland County. Robust testing programs in place for at-risk healthcare workers. I noted that it's not in place for everybody yet at this point in time. We're still working with the federal government to push out the number of kits that are needed. The testing equipment is in the hospitals now. We just haven't had sufficient supplies and Vice President Pence was speaking that on that extensively over the last couple of days. I also heard today that the governor's office worked directly to acquire a large procurement of these, of the testing materials to utilize in our equipment. So kudos to the governor for a job well done there. State core preparedness responsibilities. The states are to be working on this, testing and contact tracing. If the criteria has been met, at least within Maine Health Service, we know that that testing criteria has been met. They've been turning around tests in eight hours and less currently. Healthcare system capacity, the criteria, we have met those. Again, here in Southern Maine, even though we've had the overwhelming majority of the cases, the healthcare system has been able to handle the, the volume that's come in. And then plans, criteria have been met that are currently being implemented. This speaks to the, the planning within the hospital systems and Maine has done an exceptionally good job in that. So without getting into all, all of the rest of the criteria, the phase one looks at starting to slow phase up. I didn't put all of the elements in here. But really the phase one, really, we're already applying that. The only differences would be the social distancing that we're doing currently is part of phase one, which you'd be allowed to start having gatherings up to ten. The employer practices, the city's already doing this pursuant to our pandemic policy. That's the type of practices that you see when the stores are marking the six-foot distances outside, adhering to a specific count of individuals inside and such under that. It would allow for elective medical procedures to resume. I know this has been extremely impactful to all hospitals across the state because they've suspended elective medical procedures, which is an enormous revenue decrease to them over this period of time. Restaurants and venues would start to open with strict distancing, limited numbers. The bars remain closed. Gyms could open again, but again with social distancing and cleanliness. And schools and daycares that were closed still remain closed under phase one. Phase two, when you meet the criteria that's set there, when there's no evidence of rebound, you would add gatherings would go up to fifty people with distancing. Parks and other areas would be opened up again. That would include the beaches. Non-essential travel may resume. Common areas and employment bases may be utilized, still applying social distancing. Schools and daycares may reopen if they had previously been closed. And bars can open up at that point with limited numbers and again, social distancing. Then phase three, when there's no evidence of rebound and the gating criteria remain intact, the limitations would be peeled back to vulnerable, vulnerable individuals would resume public interactions or should still distance as possible. Large gatherings resume. This is our social, this is our sporting events and such under that. But there would be a recommendation that vulnerable people should avoid such events. No travel restrictions in place at that point in time. And again, large venues without restrictions, including bars. On the municipal side, our operations in the wake of the pandemic, municipal operations have continued to the greatest extent possible. City Clerk's and Treasurer's Office continues to operate by phone, email and mail, providing services for motor vehicles, tax collections, licensing and vital records. There have been no delays in licensing at this point in time. Codes continues to process new building permits at a level higher than last year at this point in time. There does not seem to be a reduction in the local building activity based upon our view of, of the building permits that are being requested and issued. Inspections have and continue all through, although requiring some different practices to maintain the required social distancing. So any requested occupancy permits that have met the inspection criteria, those are being issued. Police fire and EMS report reduced levels of activities. Police have had fewer calls overall during this period as, as fewer people are out and about and reasonably complying with the social distancing orders. Our dispatch center is handling approximately a hundred and fifty to two hundred calls fewer per day within the region. And the fire and EMS services are down about a hundred and fifty calls overall year to date, with a majority of that call reduction during this past two-month period. Public Works continues to prepare for what will be the busiest pavement season ever, given the local bond and the CIPs that perform seven point seven million dollars worth of work this year. Engineering is being completed. The bidding packages are prepared. Local paving contractors are aware and have indicated that they are ready to respond without delay through the COVID nineteen situation. The lower portion of the transfer station remains closed, though, through the end of April, should be able to reopen by the first of May in alignment with an anticipated order from the governor's office. Planning Department has been hit the hardest by staff reductions in an unfilled position, although that position should be occupied starting tomorrow. We were waiting for the last onboarding material to come in in the mail today. Assistant planner position that was interviewed prior to the office closures to the public has now been onboarded completely electronically with the required hard copies of paperwork. It should have been in the mail today. We can't start her until we get that paperwork. The department reports that the new way of doing business in parentheses has been implemented and the staff is doing reasonably well, although all are eager awaiting return to operations somewhat like we knew prior to the, to the virus. The largest adaptation will be to adjust to the new normal, whatever that's going to be defined as being, as we are pressed to maintain the guidelines under phase one of the reopening phases while dealing with the backlog of work stemming from the closure of facilities to the general public. So that's a statement of it's going to be difficult to maintain some of the aspects that we're going to need to and the highest demand for services because it's a pent-up demand for a whole host of services. So we continue to monitor and attempting to anticipate the fiscal impact of the operations stemming from the prolonged pandemic response of closures. We have the fiscal report tonight that's very favorable. We continue to look at anticipated impacts for the next fiscal year, which is when we would anticipate to see the majority of these impacts because of the delayed receipt of revenues and/or the loss of revenues. So that's all I have for this evening.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And I appreciate the COVID nineteen update. And I know that we get this on a daily basis, the council does, but probably the folks at home were pretty interested in, in the numbers that there. So any questions from the council on the report?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Communications presentations none this evening. Anyone here want to speak, speak publicly under public comments? Now would be the time to either raise your hand on the Zoom feature or just go ahead and speak up. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Okay, public hearings. The city council will take public comment on the following nineteen dash eight twenty-five dot zero one. A public hearing to receive comments on the renewal of special amusement permit and a liquor license renewal with malt, spiritus and venues privileges from Smithy Cinema LLC. Seven Main Street, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Nineteen dash eight fifty-two dot zero one. A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new medical marijuana grower cultivator license application submitted by Gaia Farms LLC, one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit C, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Nineteen dash eight sixty-two dot zero one. A public hearing to receive comments on the renewal liquor license application with malt, spiritus, venues privileges Pilots Cove Cafe LLC, doing business as Pilots Cove Cafe, one ninety-nine Airport Road, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Nineteen dash eight sixty-nine dot zero one. A public hearing on proposed amendment of development review fees. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? I assume someone's going to speak to the city manager, Buck?
Yes, we have Beth Della Valley, our planning director. She's on the, in the conference this evening. She can either speak here at this point in time or she, there's an expensive memo that's under the action item as far as the first read.
I'd like to at least get it in public comments. If, if there's a quick overview and then we can get into the thorough analysis under the line item and new business.
Okay, so I'd call on Beth Della Valley at this point in time?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Hard to know when I'm on and when I'm not. So the, the planning board has been working on updating development fees, actually for about two years. They started working on this in late two thousand seventeen and eighteen and had to set it aside. The goal of updating the fees, which have not been updated for, you know, within the time of anyone who's currently working with the city's memory, is to reduce the administrative burden on various city staff managing the escrow fee system, escrow fee system to increase predictability for applicants so that they know what they're going to have to pay right up front. To scale the fees so that small projects can pay less. Right now, it's a one-size-fits-all system for the most part. And, let's see. It will continue the incentive rewarding applicants who take the time to prepare a complete application the first time without having to go back and forth with, with staff holding the applicant's hand to provide the required information. And the last thing that it does is it, it adds some new fees for review elements that demand staff, committee and board time, but that, for which we currently do not charge anything. The board was very, very careful in going forward on this. Pardon me, my dog has decided to bark in the background. They took a look at the actual, we actually looked at what fees were assessed since it was tied up between an application fee and an escrow fee. We had to actually take a look at where the fees were coming in for different sized projects. We then compared the fees that Sanford charges and is proposing to charge with a number of other comparable communities, in particular Auburn, Bitterford, Lewis and Saco and Wells. And the earlier work back in two thousand seventeen included another half dozen communities. It's hard to compare those because the review categories are different. I think that's pretty much a, a broad overview. And, oh, I'm sorry, one additional thing is there is a proposal regarding charges for multiple reviews. Currently, the department charges only for the single highest fee. The planning discussed, the planning board discussed whether this system should continue, whether all permit fees should be required or whether there should be some sort of discount or bundling fee. And their recommendation, after they explored a number of scenarios, was to recommend that projects with fewer than three permit fees, permit needs should pay all of the fees and that once you reach the point of needing three permits, that the most expensive of those permits would, fees would be dropped. I think that's pretty much an overview for right now.
Okay, thank you. So anyone here to speak on behalf of this item? Okay. Hold on one second here, everybody. I just lost my, my, my place. Okay, so seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Nineteen dash eight seventy-seven dot zero one. A public hearing on proposed amendment of chapter two eighty zoning land use tables, chapter one twenty fees, chapter one forty-nine licensing and chapter one sixty-one marijuana regarding cultivation, manufacturing and testing of adult use marijuana. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? So I guess, Director Della Valley, did you also sort of lead the, the discussion as it relates to this topic as well?
Yes.
Okay, can you just give a high-level overview?
So there are a number of pieces that go into this modification of the ordinance. And this is intended to cover adult use cultivation, manufacturing primarily. Essentially, it leaves in place the system that the city has currently of designating eight marijuana properties and then clarifies that adult use cultivation and manufacturing can occur on those properties. There are modifications of the zoning ordinance and the land use tables as well as changes to chapter one twenty fees, one forty-nine licensing and one sixty-one, the marijuana ordinance. Most of the changes are simply to re-eliminate the word medical in front of marijuana. It makes it very clear that retail sales are not, that will continue to not be allowed in the community. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda. Any issues? Consent agenda, any issues relating to the consent agenda? So I'm gonna allow the council to speak if you have an issue, otherwise I will assume there's no issues. Okay, seeing none, we'll declare consent agenda approved. So we're gonna shift gears for a minute here. Under Sanford Urban Renewal Authority, whether the council realizes it or not, you are all part of the Sanford Urban Renewal Authority designation. There's there's no extra pay for that portion of your job, unfortunately. We have a we have a matter on the agenda as it relates to our authority under that renewal. So this is the agenda item eighteen dash five forty-seven dot zero one. The Sanford Urban Renewal Authority Commission convenes and authorizes the city manager on behalf of the Sanford Urban Renewal Authority Commission to sign the necessary documents to transfer two parcels of land currently owned by the Sanford Urban Renewal Authority, described as parcel number K sixteen dash thirty-one A and K sixteen forty-three, according to the city's assessing records, to Springwater LLP under the generally described condition of a mortgage deed and recreational easement of the continued use of the public for recreational purposes. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. City manager Buck?
Yep, Steve, this is Ian. Can I share my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Let me bring up my screen here for a second and. So the property is, if you can see this, is these properties, it's the it's in Springvale, it's in the middle of the Malsum River and takes up two sides of the the site. You are the Sanford Urban Renewal Authority as the city councillors. A request came from Lionel Seveney to take over management of this property. There's a bridge that that you can access from both sides of the property currently, and he wanted to ensure that it was a per sir for public use and enjoyment. Three documents have been prepared for by our legal counsel, including a document to transfer title to this Springwater LLP. And additionally, a recreational easement. I would note that the specifics of the recreational easement is it allows public use. It doesn't does not allow, like, say, overnight camping. And then, say, someone wanted to use it for a wedding venue, you'd have to establish fees that would be, had to be approved by the city council. So you couldn't be discriminatory in how it was used by the public for those recreational purposes. And then finally, a deed, it is a mortgage deed that would allow that method by which the Sanford Urban Renewal Authority would claw back the property if it wasn't kept for that public purpose being public recreation. The city council made had this request from Lionel Seveney over a year ago. There are a number of properties, including these, that are held by the Sanford Urban Renewal Authority back from a long time ago, related to that, related to the Springvale Urban Renewal Property, I mean, Project. And certain procedures were put in place to to allow the Sanford Urban Renewal Authority to convene. And then additionally, tracking down the title presented an issue for our legal counsel. And the municipal property committee has reviewed this title transfer. On one other occasion, we're accepting to the concept of how this would be transferred, and conversations have been had and preliminary sign off from Lionel Seveney and Springwater LLP regarding the transfer of this property. So I'm glad to answer any questions that you have, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, any questions?
Ian, the Malsum Way Trail runs through this area, doesn't it, if I'm understanding it correctly?
Yeah, I think that's correct. What you're so basically, it's it's just allowing for, yes, so that it's allowing for the maintenance by a private entity of a public way, a public trail.
Mr. Mayor, if I can comment at this point? Yes, the the linear park system that was actually adopted, that's those documents have been referenced in the recreational use easement that's part of the transfer. It also appears under the the mortage, mortgage for this this property. So it's the preservation of the linear park system, the two bridges that are there, the responsibility of maintaining that portion that comes across this particular property will go onto the LLC at this point in time as opposed to the city. So they've got a commitment to update both of the bridges that are there, maintain the trail system that passes through. They've been working with the historical society to preserve the original foundation for the grist mill that was out there and do some historical documentation and signage for those properties out there. All of that's been preserved, and that was part of the terms and conditions that were set forth by the property subcommittee that dealt with this, and Ian has preserved those and had it written into the restrictive covenants going forward.
And Mr. Stackpole, I believe you can see that up on the screen here at this time as well. You can see the dotted lines that represent that liney linear park system.
Yep, I can see it.
Yep, thank you.
So the the property subcommittee did see this a few times and had conversations with with Lionel Seveney about the intent of the property and things of that nature, and it really is just to be the caretaker of that that area and preserve it and making sure that, you know, maintain things of that nature. So it was it was supported by by our group as well. Anything further on this?
Except, you know, one final comment. If you haven't been down in there to take a walk, it's actually quite an interesting area. There's several rapids and small waterfalls or whatever that that come down through there. And again, it's actually quite a nice area. There were some, I believe, some picnic tables and a couple of bridges in there. I haven't been in there for a long time, but when I used to live up in Springvale, that was a place that I used to walk around down in there. So if you haven't been there, go take a look because it's actually probably a much overlooked little part of the Malsum Malsum Trail. It's quite enjoyable.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I just want to add, it came up in discussion is is that area was being pretty neglected, overgrown, and and big damage with trash and littering and stuff. So giving Lionel Seveney this property, it allows it to be maintained and upkept. So it's going to be a real big plus for the community and a lot more usable.
Agreed. Yeah, anything else? Okay, fellow commissioners, we'll go, we'll take the roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan? Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. Excellent, thank you. So we're gonna shift back to our regular city council meeting now. Old business, nine nineteen dash eight fifty-three dot zero one, order to sign the municipal warrant to call for a July fourteenth, twenty twenty school budget validation referendum. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. City manager Buck, do you want to just provide the clarity on this?
Yes, our city clerk, Sue Cody, is on on the line if she wants to carry the water on this item.
Is Cody?
I just turned it.
I just unmuted her.
Sue, are you able to comment on this item? Okay, I'll carry this then. So at the last city council meeting, we had the June sixth, I believe it was June sixth warrant that was tabled because at that point in time, there was an indication that in all likelihood, the governor was going to change the date for the municipal, for the elections for this year. That order has been issued by the governor's office now, and it is July fourteenth will be our statewide elections this year. This warrant takes exactly the same elements that were on the prior warrant that was issued, the school validation vote. It moves it to the July fourteenth and provides for all of the requisite dates backing those up for when absentee ballots will be made available, when the the polling locations will be open, and when you can come to city office for early voter registration, although those elements have been corrected. So I would ask for city council to consider authorizing this warrant as presented this evening.
Okay, any questions as it relates to the warrant?
No. So moved.
Okay, perfect. So we'll do the roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. Next up, nineteen dash eight sixty-four dot zero one, order to approve a proposed amendment of chapter two eighty zoning regarding membership of site plan review committee. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We've seen this a few times. Basically, it removes the city council presence as a not needed element, right? I know it sounds like zoning subcommittee saw this again, no further changes. Anything further on this from anybody?
I'll just say again, regarding zoning, where we looked this over for a second time here, and there was no changes and virtually no comments, really, just comments only in support of, we agree it's no longer needed.
Perfect. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole? Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Thank you. Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. All right, new business, nineteen dash eight fifty-one dot zero one, order to approve the new license application from Gaia Farms to operate as a medical marijuana grower at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Sanford, Maine. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions on this? I know that it's by default, basically, that Jamie and Patrick have done their due diligence, but they would speak up, obviously, if there was concerns. They're not here to speak about concerns as it relates to this property. Anything from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven. All right, nineteen dash eight seventy-four dot zero one, order to approve amendment to chapter two eighty zoning land use tables, chapter one twenty fees, chapter one forty-nine licensing, and chapter one sixty-one marijuana regarding cultivation, manufacturing, and testing of adult-use marijuana. This item must be read on separate occasions. This is the first reading. Anything further on this from the council? I would I would just encourage everybody to read through this. It's lengthy. I realize there's a lot of, there's a lot to it, and some of it's redundant from the medical marijuana licensing. But just want to make sure that we we are all up to speed and versed on this as it, you know, is somewhat of a meaningful change, if not only by name, but it is different than the direction we initially started as far as the support for medical. So.
Here, Cody?
Yes.
Is it appropriate to ask a question at this time?
Of course, yeah.
So I had the luxury of sitting in on one of the zoning meetings, I think it was two, two meetings ago, and Council Lanigan brought up an interesting piece of conversation that I just wanted to clarify or inquire as to why it didn't seem to make it into the final ordinance. Council Lanigan, you were talking about considering looking at medical marijuana offices and not having those in juxtaposition right next to, you know, non-medical marijuana prop, excuse me, like cultivation? Do you recall that conversation or where it went?
Yes, I can explain that if you'd like.
Please.
So so what we found is, is from doing some more research is, A, the recreational or adult-use end is so stringent from the tracking and tracing, everything is tied in to computer systems from the weights to every everything that goes through that. So I don't think that we felt that there was a worry about it crossing over. As for not getting rid of the offices, our fear is is that was going to move that activity back into our parking lots and back into our community in a negative way.
Thank you. That that makes great sense to me. I appreciate that information.
Can I can I just do a follow-up on that question? So let me make sure I understand what you're saying. So the medical, if there's a medical marijuana grower currently, and they have office space because we wanted to get them out of the parking lots, if they turn that growth into recreational, what happens to that office space?
If if the growth area that's attached to that office goes recreational, then that office has to go away. It's not allowed to coexist. So what we're talking about is more of, if you picture the property having one large building and the person using, you know, subletting one side to a grower that grows recreational marijuana, and then on the other side, you have a renter or owner that grows medical marijuana and has an office. There was some concerns about the bleeding over of product from one side to the other. But after doing a lot more research, the tracking and tracing and the enforcement from the state is so stringent that we didn't feel that it was a worry for the city to get involved. And if there was any inclination of that, the state is so prepared to come down on them, a lot more prepared than they ever were in the medical side.
I guess that that's that was my next question, actually, and I don't know if who's really qualified to answer this question, but we hear a lot about state enforcement of this or that, and, you know, is it just that the that the language is written strongly or do we have any proof that the state is actually checking on anything?
I can speak to it or someone else can. I don't know, Steve, if you'd like to or if there's someone else on the phone or in the meeting.
Well, I can, I'd like Director Delavalle and Code Officer Cole to chime in here as well. Let me see if I can get Jamie off off mute here.
I'm here, Steve.
Yep. Okay, so and Beth, if you can speak to the language, I was trying to pull it out. I can't remember if it's in two eighty or one sixty-one that talks about the medical marijuana office facilities, because that's that's consumed a large part of the the time and conversation in this is that the way the way the amendments have been worded now, so this goes back to Councilor Hanselman's earlier inquiries to Councilor Lanigan. The, I'm going to do two, two points here. First, the on the tracking, so for the adult-use marijuana, there is a, I call it cradle to grave, so seed to end product RFID chip tracking system that goes into that. So from the time that the seed is planted, it's accounted for, there's an RFID tag that stays with that through the growth of the plant, the harvesting of the product, and all the way to the end, end of product and end consumer, that is a very stringent process. I can't speak to the state's level of enforcement on that because they're just getting going, just getting started, and we have, we here at the city have no direct experience with that unless somebody else can can speak to that. So there's that piece. The other piece was, a lot of time was spent recognizing that the, for the medical marijuana facilities, the have, that are allowed to have an attached office to deal to deal with that product, but that has worked reasonably well, that that system should stay in place. So you have eight properties that are allowed to have some level of marijuana licensing, you know, use marijuana generically, medical and or adult use, once this is this is adopted. They could cultivate their cultivate their manufacturer, test, and such under that. When it comes to. When it comes to the, the office can only be for a medical marijuana production suite. So think of it as a suite. So you have a property that has a facility on it, can have multiple suites. If you have a medical marijuana suite with an, that will have an allowed office because an office is allowed in that particular zone, that can continue. If that suite was to be converted to adult use, that office has to go away. If there are suite adjoining that inside of that facility on that property is adult use, it cannot have an office, nor can it use the pre-existing office for the medical piece. And that's where the conversation revolved around and the language was strengthened to ensure that it was well-known that the medical marijuana office space is that and that only and cannot be used for adult use. So Beth?
Yes. So the language you're referring to, Steve, is in the proposed amendment in the I'm sorry, somebody, it said in chapter two eighty dash fifteen dash ten point three point six, which is on page six of the document, lines thirteen through twenty-seven, and the most significant change that's being proposed is on line twenty-two, making it absolutely crystal clear that this office shall not qualify as either a medical marijuana dispensary for retail sales or for retail sales of adult-use marijuana.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so anything further as relates to this item?
Yeah, I, I just have one, one quick comment, Mayor, talking about the enforcement. Because clearly we're issuing, the city is issuing licenses for these establishments, and we discussed this in subcommittee, and while the licenses are issued for a year, they are only for a year. So if we have a facility, we'll just say is not playing by the rules, and the state, for whatever reason, is not able to enforce this, well, I'll just leave it at that, to enforce the laws, then the city council will have the option annually to just not reissue the license. So that's maybe not as immediate a solution as maybe we would like, but it is an ultimate solution that we can just not reissue the licenses to this particular business.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could add?
Yeah.
Two things is, is, is one to that, one point that was brought up to us is the, the cost of entrance into the adult or the recreational use market is so expensive that taking the risk of, of moving it over into the medical side is just, is not worth the risk because you can lose everything. That's just from a personal business end. The second is, I don't know if, if it's possible, if city manager, if we could maybe get someone from the marijuana office up in Augusta to jump on our zoo, on our meeting next week, our zoning, and maybe talk to the enforcement so we all have a better idea of it and feel comfortable moving forward with the enforcement mechanism by the state?
Yes, I'll, I'll make that inquiry and see if we can set that up.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, right before you, Deputy Mayor, hold on one second. Did, did Council Hanselman, did you have another question?
Uh, well, more a comment in nature, and honestly, it might be a future agenda item more so than relative to the zoning, but, you know, I've, I've had opportunity to express some of my concerns about marijuana and moving into the adult-use arena with some of the folks in that industry. And one of those concerns is just around the impact that has on our youth and the cost that ultimately it has in our city as well. And there was conversations about there being some receptiveness to setting up some kind of funding stream or other industry committing to providing some potential support and programming similar to what the cigarette and tobacco industry have done with, you know, education for youth and so on. So again, I think it's maybe more a future agenda item, honestly, as I think about it. Can bring it up then.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to assuage Council Stackpole's concerns and anybody else that might have concerns about what we are licensing and that it's, you know, concerns about negative behaviors that might come out of it, we would not have to wait. If there's a problem, I don't expect there will be, I hope there won't be, but if there is a problem, there is a mechanism where we can hold a public hearing and then vote to either suspend or revoke the license. Whatever the city gives, the city can take away. We did that a few years ago on a liquor, and I believe in entertainment licenses as well. It's not something we would do lightly, but it is a tool in our toolbox if there is a problem.
Okay, anything further on this? We're going to see this again in two weeks? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Nineteen dash seven nine nine zero one, order to accept operating rights agreement for the 2020 season for specialized aeronautical services with Skydive Coastal Main LLC at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded.
All right. Allison, you with us?
I am. Good evening. Can you hear me?
There you are. Yes, thank you.
Very good. I do have a lot of extra documents in addition to what was in the backup, so I can look at those if you want to share the screen, or we can just start kind of going through these and we can pick them as we go.
Allison, do you have the documents loaded and, and ready to share if I stop sharing?
I do, yep.
Okay, I'll hand the screen over to you.
Hmm, it's not letting me. It's saying host disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay, come on. Sorry, I'm not, I'm not, not finding the ability to allow you to share.
All right, we can go with the documents that you have on there. That should cover most of them.
Um, I do have the documents loaded up here though, just a moment.
While we're doing that, I can start giving some of the background information. This is a pretty in-depth topic that we have.
Uh, while you're doing that, Allison, which documents, which documents do you want to put up first or which document?
Um, if you wanted to start with a memo, what I'm going to do is just go through, I set it up in basically eight points. So as we go through each point, there's a couple of different backup documents that we can pull.
Let me see which one is the memo, uh, you want, well, memo's in the packet.
Yep, the Greenwich generated memo. So Bitterford's closing its airport for an extensive construction project this summer, and that's going to displace a bunch of their tenants and their businesses as well. They're getting a brand-new runway reconstruction, so you can imagine when they only, only have one runway that they can't stay open when that's under construction. So Skydive Coastal Main approached me a few months ago about temporarily relocating to SFM just for the period of time that Bitterford's going to be closed. The knee-jerk reaction, of course, is that SFM's much busier than Bitterford, and it might not be compatible for this added activity. So what I did was I met with Rich Fowler from Skydive and also spoke extensively with Nick Sergi. Both of them are on the call in case anybody has any questions that they can speak to in more detail about the actual operations themselves and the ins and outs of those types of things. I performed extensive due diligence to determine if and how this new operation would work, including reviewing insurance requirements and talking to our insurance carriers, the air traffic control rules, existing best practices at other airports with similar layouts and types of operations, and really a lot, a lot of airports that have much more complex layouts and a lot higher operations as far as takeoffs and landings and the complexity of the airspace than we have. I looked at the existing best practices at those airports, FAA rules, the regulations, and all the operations as well. I spent some time on the United States Parachute Association website. That's, it's like Pilot One-O-One for anybody who wants to do skydiving and parachute operations, so they have their own complete set of safety requirements and all the protocols that they follow. So needless to say, it's been a very in-depth process, involves a lot of tenant outreach. I sent all the backup documentation to my contact list of all the different airport tenants. It's about a hundred and forty-five people that are over here, so was able to get some good feedback, some really great questions. And again, that knee-jerk reaction is, wow, it's pretty busy at Sanford. I don't really know if this is going to be safe or not. So that's, that's what we keep coming back to. I had this on as an agenda item at the Airport Advisory Committee meeting, their regular meeting, back, I think that was back in February, January maybe, and then of course we came into the whole COVID-19 situation. So we ended up setting up a special meeting with the Zoom as the technology to facilitate that, and that meeting was really good. Probably lasted about two hours where we really got into the nitty-gritty. We had really good participation from tenants on the airfield calling in with their concerns and their questions. All of the major businesses and activities representatives were on the call. So we had Jim Knowles, who I believe is on call tonight too, if he wants to talk as well, all the Airport Advisory Committee members. There was representatives from Lifelight, from the Helicopter School, and several other tenants as well. So we had a really good meeting with that to talk everything through. There were still some safety concerns, and they recommended that we move forward with it, but it was a vote of five to two, so that there were still two that did vote against that. So that was all recorded through Zoom, and that, the audio of that entire thing is up on the, on the airport's website under the Airport Advisory Committee. So going through all of these items, again, I recognize that kind of knee-jerk reaction for safety is that healthy skepticism, and that was felt multiple times over the last seven years that I've been here, when the gliders started their club, went through kind of the same thing. This is non-typical, how's it going to fit with how busy we are? Same thing with Lifelight when they came in. So now we have this helicopter that's going to be operating, they're going to be taking off in an emergency situation all the time. How is that going to impact? So we use factual information, open communication, best practices, and maintain situational awareness, and we're able to safely accommodate all of these different activities. Looking at the research, I came up with, and one of the things unfortunately that I'm not going to be able to share with you since you can't see my screen, I have a seven-page list of all of the different other airports in the United States that have drop zones on the airport. So here at Sanford, we're the, we're the busiest airport, and we have the most base aircraft of any airport in Maine. So that usually makes us feel pretty proud and pretty good about what we have right now. But we are completely small potatoes when it comes to reliever airports throughout the United States. So a lot of these other airports, there's forty-three of them that have drop zones right on the airport for skydiving, and many of them have very similar operations, meaning they have multi-engine aircraft that are based on the airfield, they have jet aircraft that are based on the airfield, gliders, paramotors, ultralights, and they have parachute operations as well as helicopter and fixed-wing flight schools. A lot of those have, you know, a hundred and seventy base aircraft, some of them have over four hundred base aircraft. So they have four times more base aircraft than we do, and they're still accommodating this activity safely. So that, that's important, looking at, at things later on when we start talking about what's reasonable to deny something for safety reasons. There's down, Steve, I think it's nineteen seven ninety-nine oh one where it says SFM ops count for twenty seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, up a few of them.
You said ops count? Oh, got it.
Yep. So today I pulled the ops count, and this is from the radio recording device that we have. So these are the numbers from two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen. So one little caveat in here, for two thousand eighteen, July and August, there was about a three-week period where the equipment was malfunctioning and it wasn't picking things up. So there were more operations than that during that period. So that's where this kind of falls flat at times. So you can see, of course, as you would guess, our busiest time is usually that period from June to September. You can add the shoulder in there of May to October. So last year, anybody would tell you that we were very, very busy. Our summer was, was. And so this validates that. Everything was really going gangbusters, June, July, August, and September. So if you average those out, it's about a hundred and sixty-four operations a day. An operation is a takeoff or a landing. So that's how many airplanes were buzzing around over here. So that's averaging it out. Of course, there's busier days, and there's days when it's raining and it's not very busy at all. A lot of these other airports, some of them have five hundred operations a day. So, you know, of course, busier than us. So you look at these, there, we had last year thirty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight takeoffs and landings. So just wanted to put that information out there so you can kind of see comparatively that, what the research has shown for that. In addition to the operations and whether we can safely accommodate another activity over here, want to point out that this business will provide a positive economic impact to the airport. It will have the fees, tie-downs, and customer attraction. Business is also able to achieve continuity since its home airport is closed down. So they could be, you know, facing some hardship if, if they aren't able to operate. So this provides that for them. The other thing too, just to kind of put in the background, because then some of the questions did come up with emails, if the governor doesn't lift their order and you can't, you, you still have to be socially distancing and essential businesses, you know, skydiving's not necessarily an essential business, I wouldn't guess. So if, if that's not lifted, then this is all kind of a moot point. So just want to put that out there that this is contingent upon that, and in that operating rights agreement, I put a statement in there that said it's contingent upon executive orders in the state of Maine being lifted. So that has to happen and it has to get approved by the city council before you move forward with any activity. Item number four in there is the activity is temporary. So the day that Bitterford reopens, they're moving back over to Bitterford. So they're opening their bids, I believe it's the first week of May, and then they're looking to start construction late May, early June, and it's going to be a sixty to a ninety-day construction period. So we all know how construction goes. Could be longer, maybe everything will be right on time. So looking at just this season and the operating rights agreement is only valid until the end of this season. Item number five talks about federal grant obligations. So the other layer to this is that Sanford is federally obligated airport. We take, oh, there's that list. I didn't know it got added. So that goes through and that shows, and, you know, apologize, I didn't type it all up beautifully, but that shows just all the different notes going through and doing the research on all the different airports that have drop zones, how many operations they have per year, how many base aircraft, and I circled in green all the ones that have more than us, that are busier than us essentially. As far as federal grant obligations, because we receive federal funding, that's one of the items that's on the agenda a little bit later on tonight, we have to follow different rules that FAA sets forward at the federal level. One of those different rules is that we cannot unjustly discriminate against recognized aeronautical activities. Skydiving is a recognized aeronautical activity. You think about the parachutes coming out, and one of the things that I've learned over the course of this is that I was picturing more of almost like a cartoonish type of thing, or maybe a, you know, World War II type of thing where people are getting dropped out and they really kind of have no control and the wind just takes them and they land wherever, and that is not correct. That's not what this is, and Nick or Rich could speak to that a little bit more. They're basically an, an airfoil or an airplane with no engine. They have complete control over where they're going, and they have complete control over where they come in to land, same as an airplane. Of course, there's emergency situations and there's procedures for all of that, but it is a recognized aeronautical activity, and because we take that federal money, we can't tell them that they can't have a business here. So that, if, if that was the case, then they would have cause to appeal that to FAA, and then you get into a part thirteen challenge situation, and FAA makes that ultimate decision of what is allowable and what isn't. So one of the things where FAA would say that, okay, yeah, we agree that something isn't allowable at the airport, it would be if it was reasonably ascertained that it is unsafe. So that's one of the reasons why all this research is really important to see what goes on at other airports throughout the United States, because it's not reasonable to say that it's unsafe when it takes place at other airports that are much busier and much more complex than Sanford is. Item number six, the operation will be low impact due to the small number of drops. Item number six, the operation will be low impact due to the small number of drops. So it's a two-person operation here. So Nick and Rich are actually the ones who are doing the jumping. It's not a school, it's not a recreational type of activity where anybody who has ever parachuted before or is certified can just buy a plane ride and then jump out on their own. Nick and Rich are going to be the ones that are doing every single jump. So those two are the ones that are doing it. The maximum for the way the logistics work out, because they only have one airplane, is that they take off, and it takes about an hour to go through the whole process per jump. So the maximum that you could ever have is two parachutes in the air per hour. And when they're traveling through, they're really in the traffic pattern area for about two minutes. The pilot has a complete procedure to follow. They also coordinate with Portland Air Traffic Control, so Portland knows what's going on every single time they jump, the location that they're in, everything that they're doing. And they communicate the same way that other pilots communicate. It's all through a common traffic advisory frequency, and everyone has that situational awareness of what's going on at the airport. All the drops are tandem, so like I said, they're not individual drops, they're performed by experts, and between Nick and Rich, they have over 20,000 jumps under their belt. So they've been doing it, they've been doing it for a while. Number seven, the drop zone's been cited to be clear of all safety areas and obstacle-free areas. So we identified a spot, we spent an extensive amount of time cruising around the airport and looking at the flight patterns and the traffic patterns, and figuring out where the best and the safest spot would be. And there's basically a hole in the middle, if you look straight down from the top, where the airplanes fly around. Now, that being said, pilots, it's just like people driving on the road. Everybody goes to driver's ed, and you're supposed to follow all the rules, but not everybody does exactly what they're supposed to do. So one of these things is the communication, the situational awareness, and it's having very well-known operating procedures. So that was one of the common threads, every airport manager that I talked to, and then when I spoke to FAA as well, it was, the safety really depends on everybody knowing what's going on and being aware of what's going on. So having that open communication. So one of the things we'll be doing, if the city council approves this tonight and we go forward with the operating rights agreement, my next step will be coordinating a meeting with opportunities for all the airport operators to present on their procedures, and then they can also be asked questions from tenants and users. So it's about that time when we have enough going on over here that we should probably be doing this annually, so that Lifelight can say, okay, here's what we do, these are the types of ways that we respond to things. When we get in the helicopter and take off, these are the departure routes that we take. Pine Tree Helicopter can get in and say, yeah, when you see us out in the airfield and we're doing these strange-looking maneuvers, this is what we're practicing, this is what we're looking out for. Same thing with the parachute guys, they can talk about what their operations entail, the gliders, and so on and so forth, so that everybody knows what everybody else is doing around the airport, and it's a learning activity as well. Number eight, and finally, a very extensive and thorough set of operating procedures have been written, and those are incorporated into the operating rights agreement. So that operating rights agreement that's on the agenda to be approved for this item incorporates those SOPs as part of the agreement that they have to be followed, or else it puts any of their right to operate in jeopardy. So this is an unprecedented thing that I haven't done before. I haven't required a standard operating procedure document of any of the other flight schools or anything that happens on the airport, but due to the nature of this and wanting to have that increased safety, felt that that was very important. So Nick and Rich did an awesome job, they came up with this document that's on there, the standard operating procedures. It's 17 pages, and it goes through absolutely every single thing they do, down to checking the airplane before, to, you know, every single radio call they make, all of that kind of stuff. So that's in there. The other thing that's in there is a clause, pretty much after every, every different item, saying that if the airport manager or the safety officer for the skydive company sees anything that's unsafe, they can suspend the drop zone at any time. So if there's consequences in there, if anything isn't followed, we have the ability to suspend the operation. So wanted to make sure that that was in there and our rights and powers are protected with that. So that being said, that's a rundown of where we're at right now. So what's on the agenda is to approve the operating rights agreement for the skydiving company for just the 2020 season.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I have one, if I could.
I'm sorry, who is this?
This is Luke.
Oh, you didn't sound, it sounded like someone else. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, yeah, I'm on a different device. So my question is, is just with all the construction going on down there, and I'm sure you've thought of this, is it's not going to impede any of the progress on the solar project that's going on based on drop zones and all of that, correct? And there's no safety concerns with that much increased activity on the ground? I know you spoke a lot about in the air, but I'm speaking on all the ground activity that's actually happening at the airport with all the development.
Correct, yep. So we thought about that. We have a whole construction safety phasing plan for the solar project, and they're very, very strict about where they're allowed to drive and where they're not. So all of their haul routes, all of their areas where they're operating are completely segregated from where this is going to be taking place. It's a different gate that they're going through on the airport, and it's a different part of the field.
Thank you.
I couldn't get my mute off there. Any other further questions from the council?
No.
Okay, we learnt a lot about skydiving in an airport this evening, okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I said that you and I were going to be the first to the job in a competition, so I'd let you know ahead.
See who hits the ground first?
Yeah, I'm the little guy, right?
Oh my gosh, I'd love to give it a whirl, that sounds awesome. All right. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, thank you for the detailed overview, and I think some of the gentlemen are listening in here, thanks guys, we appreciate your interest in Sanford Airport, and hopefully we'll all be dropping out of planes here, surely.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, did you guys want to add anything that wasn't said?
I think Allison was pretty thorough. If there's any questions, though, to entertain any questions anybody might have.
Absolutely.
Thanks, guys. Any questions from the council? Okay, well, thank you, we appreciate you hanging in there long evening, and again, Council Tall and I have already signed up for the earliest run, so it's, it's on. Okay, so.
Good.
We'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tall?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Hansler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. Okay, thanks, guys, we appreciate it, look forward to seeing the activity at the airport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem, anytime, all right. So next up this evening, we have 19-876-01, order to approve amendment of development review fees. This must be read on two separate occasions, this is the first reading. Anything further on this? So I must admit, I'm not entirely sold on this yet. I've gone through the charts, there's a lot there. To me, it seems complicated, maybe to a developer, it seems very straightforward. I guess I got a, I tested a bit. I'm concerned about the timing of the introduction of this topic. I think we could be heading into a very unknown economic sort of time, and increasing fees on an unknown market is, to me, not the best idea. I guess the question I have is, with the current fee structure, if you applied this fee structure, what would be the difference in collections? And I suspect we don't have that in front of us tonight, but I would like to get that analysis. What is the difference in money that would be gained by increasing the fees, and specifically where those buckets sort of fit? I see City Manager is changing gears, maybe, do you have that analysis, Steve?
I believe, Beth, if you can see the screen right now, I believe this is the comparison of the current fee versus the proposed fee. And by my remembrance here, the largest thing was to segregate out the smaller projects from the larger ones. This is part of the three phases of making adaptations to ensure that we're as business-friendly as possible. This is the schedule that looks at the before and the after. So before, the small projects that are now subject to administrative review only, and do enough to go before the planning board, were paying the high fee. They were paying the full boat, like they were a large-scale subdivision or other project above 30,000 square feet, up to 100,000 square feet. So those have been segregated out now. So Beth, do you get a comment on this further?
Hi, I actually went through this to see how many of the fees actually were reduced. And there's a good almost dozen fees that actually go down under this proposed approach. It does look a bit more complicated on the face of it, but as you start working your way through each of the different categories, you'll see that they're, that the intent was essentially to right-size the fees, so that the small projects, the not-complicated projects, the little amendments, could get away with a far-reduced fee over what they would be charged currently, because it's the way it's currently set up, it doesn't matter whether you're big or small, whether your change is big or small, you get charged the full boat. So the intent really was to introduce some more flexibility, and to be a little more conscientious about reducing the fees for the smaller and mid-sized projects. Obviously, the larger projects, the fees are substantial, but if you look at them, you'll see that virtually all of them are less than the upper limit of what some applicants have been charged. You just can't predict what's going to happen with the escrow fee for an applicant. You ought to be able to predict it a bit. If you do a really good job on your application, you should be paying less. Unfortunately, that message hasn't completely gotten home to some applicants. But I think that's pretty much it. We're trying to introduce into this a reduced expenditure on the part of the small and some of the medium-sized projects.
Okay, so I guess I'll go back to my question. If we took a period of time, let's call it 2019, is it impossible to assess, given this new fee structure, what the difference in collections would be?
We'd really be pretty much crystal balling it, Tom. What we did, what the planning board did recommend is that, let's get one year of experience using this, and go back, and at that point, do a comparison, where we have some real projects to compare them to. Alternatively, I think, you know, we did talk about trying to run those numbers, the difficulty is coming up with credible predictions for the types of projects that are going to come in in any individual year. So that made it more difficult. I could spend some time doing this, I'm not sure it's going to be a meaningful analysis.
So I guess I'm asking the question, because right now, what I don't hear is we have a fee problem, okay, from the customer base. And I wrote down what you said the goal was in the beginning, which was to reduce admin burden.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we're asking them to do basically is cover our costs, so.
No, they don't even come close to covering our costs, Tom.
Nobody ever does in the municipal government.
Correct.
If I take an ambulance ride, I'm not covering the cost to every person that's available. My concern is that, you know, I don't want to suddenly have a situation where we've just, oh yeah, this sounds great, and all of a sudden, we're getting barraged with, my development costs just doubled because we've just gone ahead and done this fee structure. So not knowing specifically how it would be applied to each sort of subjective person that walks in that door, is a very difficult thing for me to raise my hand and say, yeah, that sounds great. Because, you know, we, I'm trying to be as nice as possible. You know, in Sanford, we're not in the luxury of like, hey, well, you need to be charged this, and you'll do business here no matter what. I don't, I don't think that we got that kind of leverage on the development here. We should be encouraging and making it easy and cheap to develop here. So I don't know if I'm, you know, making my point or not, but I guess I need to analyze this more. I'd love to see some examples, even if it's not the whole shooting match from last year, there's got to be some developments that occurred that you could apply this same structure to, and say, this is what they paid actually last year, this is what it would cost under this new fee structure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I share your concerns, and I'm curious to know what the timeliness of this action would be. Could we table it for three months and see where the economy is at and what's going on? Or is it something that we need to act upon soon?
Yes, City Manager Buck or Director De La Valley, is this a time-sensitive topic? I know it's been obviously considered for a long time, but is there, are we up against some timeline we don't know about?
Nope, it's entirely in your control.
Okay.
The piece that I would ask Council would consideration on, and perhaps, Beth, if you can comment, one of my largest concerns has been, well, it's twofold. A, the auditors have slapped their hand a little bit as far as the maintenance of the ongoing escrow accounts. That's been problematic. The report out to us each year at the management level, as far as getting rid of those escrow accounts, because they all have, the fees have to be segregated, interest has to be segregated, and such under that. So there's that element. One of my biggest concerns is those small, those smaller projects that has been already separated out, so they can go before administrative review as opposed to going to planning board review. What's the cost savings to those small projects? I see relatively, it's going to be very similar numbers for the major projects. Those generally are not our larger concern, because they come in with the architects and engineers, all of those elements that are needed for those large-scale projects. My concern continues to be that small, that small business is going to expand, they're going to do an addition, it's really our bread and butter. It's that small business that's doing all of this on their own, as opposed to a large-scale developer that does development for their general business, for their, you know. So do you see what I'm saying there, Beth?
Yes. So a lot more of the smaller projects will now be coming through. You'll remember that in, that the council approved a modification of the ordinance that allowed projects up to 5,000 square feet to go through staff-level review. Right now, you know, what's being proposed is, let me see, is a $250 fee as opposed to a $550 fee, which would be the current fee. So with, you know, with the understanding that that $550 fee actually could be more if you've got complexities in your review, or a hard time putting your application together, and it requires more engagement on the assistant city engineer's basis, clearly the price will go up. And then, and then the small businessperson is going to be hit with sticker shock at the end of it, because they won't know what the real price of that application is until after the work is all done and we invoice them for those additional escrow fees. So in general, what, you know, as Steve started to talk about, you know, the primary purpose here was not to get rid of the administrative burden, although it is substantial, but really to provide some better predictability for the applicant and for the small projects being able to pay a lower fee. But in terms of the administration, as Steve was starting to explain, every time we have to collect an escrow fee, my administrative assistant has to work with the city treasurer to set up an escrow account for that application. We have to charge down against that, that account. Every time we have any out-of-pocket costs, now we've rearranged our process so that mostly that's only going to be advertising, but occasionally there are additional fees. We have to collect time spent on the application review by the assistant city engineer, we have to translate that into an invoice, we have to send the invoice out, then we have to track down and process payments. Sometimes it takes multiple approaches invoicing. to track down and process payments. Sometimes it takes multiple approaches invoicing to collect it. When we're finally done with it all, we have to close the account. Each of these stages involves not just the planning department staff, but the assistant engineers' stat time, as well as time from the finance department and the treasurer. And then, as Steve pointed out, when we get to the audit, since I've been with the city, every single audit has raised questions about at least two to three, if not more, of these escrow accounts every single year. So that's kind of just the background on the administrative burden. For the amount of money that we're collecting through those escrow fees, it seems like an inordinate use of time. When we were looking at establishing the fees, we took a look at what the range of fees were, and the recognition was that once you get rid of the escrow, that goes up and down depending upon how much time it takes for the engineer to be involved in the review, that in some case, if you go with, if you go from a fee that varies application by application to one that's set based upon the nature of the application, usually it's the size and complexity, that sometimes the city would make a little bit more money on that application than they would out of one where we had the old system, and sometimes we would make less. But the presumption was that on balance, it was worth losing a little bit of revenue in exchange for saving a lot of administrative time and clearing up the confusion on the part of the applicant. We take great care in the very first meetings we have with them and their consultants, make it clear that the escrow fee is a starting fee and that likely they will end up paying more, although it's possible they may get a refund. It doesn't matter how many times I say this, even the consultant can't seem to get it into their heads. And so I end up with these very, very unhappy people at the end of the process. Steve has unfortunately had to deal with a couple of them over the last several years because we are simply incapable of following the ordinance provision, which requires virtually a weekly management of the system in terms of reporting hours and updating things and sending correspondence and receiving it and writing our account. So anyway, as a result of that, Steve has had to forgive considerable amounts of escrow fees when there were applicants who came forward and complained that we weren't following our own rules. Steve, does that do what you wanted?
It does. So the summation of that is, the system that we have is overburdened some. It's red tape heavy. It streamlines that system, brings greater surety to the developer as far as what cost it is they're going to pay. But overall, the big change really is to that smaller project, bringing that surety and avoiding the establishment of the escrow account, which for a small-scale project is overly burdensome, and that's where we get the pushback at the local development level.
Okay, so, can you hear me right now? Am I muted?
Yes, no, we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, I can't, my computer's starting to get crazy. The, I guess I'll go back to my original question, which still in a way wasn't answered, and I don't mean to be flippant about it. It's just, I'm just trying to get an assessment of what this, does it gain all kinds of money? Or does it, is it something else? And I understand the small business, I get that part. I guess I'm actually more concerned about the rest of it. And it's the middle people. It's the, it's the company that wants to build a subdivision of homes. What does this kind of do to their development? Because that kind of development is what's going to drive revenue here. And we've all talked about how dire our revenue situation is because the taxes are so high. You know, I don't like to see increases in those lines. So that's where I'm at. That's why I'm asking the question. If you want to propose something that just drops the price for a small business, that's great. I'm all for it. But when I see the other lines go up, that's when I start to get concerned. So, and I understand all the work that you're, you're too messed to do in the various departments, but I would strike that as a cost of doing business. So that's my thought. We don't, we don't need to, we're obviously not voting on this tonight. We could, if we, you know, W. Mayor Hanslip asked about tabling, which I would, I would support. We can certainly do that at the next meeting, but I'm just, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't have a comfort level with this topic yet, personally. Anything else on this topic?
Mayor Cody?
Yes.
I, you know, kind of in line with your question about just having an example of one, a couple of projects, you know, under the old system compared to the new system. I think that would be helpful, certainly. But would it be, from my perspective, I would love some input from some of our folks that have done mid-to-large size, and maybe don't have good examples, but some development work in town, whether that's, you know, just pooling some of those folks and just saying, hey, you know, we have this proposed change, you know, what's your take on it and get feedback. Not to say that drives our final decision, but it could be helpful in just hearing their perspective like we would, you know, others' people's perspective in the community about certain things. So I don't know if that's possible, but that would certainly be interesting from me to hear that information.
So could we take five representative projects that many of us may be familiar with, run it through this new fee system and compare it as to how that worked cost-wise and time-wise with the old escrow system? Would that be helpful?
Yeah. I mean, honestly, because right now, again, it's a shot in the dark. I mean-
Steve, make sure there's a mix of us, a couple, like a smaller project in there somewhere.
Understood, yes.
I like that idea, and if that's available by the next council meeting, then we could take action rather than tabling it. I don't, you know, my crystal ball's a little cloudy, but I like the idea.
I'd like to propose that we look at that for the next zoning subcommittee for the in-between meeting, you know, in between this council meeting and the next, if we can review those five type of examples at the zoning subcommittee meeting. That could perhaps develop the consensus we need moving forward for the next council meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, great. Anything else on this topic? Okay, see none, we'll move forward. Where are we? Dash eight sixty dot zero one, order the council authorize the city manager to accept CARES Act grant offer from the FAA in the amount of sixty-nine thousand to be spent on approved airport operating expenses and capital expenditures. Do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right. So Allison here from the airport. This is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act that was passed a few weeks ago. There's a big chunk of that that goes to FAA. We didn't know what this would look like, so I brought it before property subcommittee last week, just in anticipation of this, and that same day found out that the award that we were going to get as a regional airport is sixty-nine thousand dollars. I thought maybe we'd have a couple more zeros on the end of that, but it's definitely better than nothing. And that will help us to fulfill our CIP request that we submitted for this fiscal year that we cut from the budget when we went forward with what was accepted last week. So this is basically allow, very, very open what you can do with this money. It's anything that you can use airport revenue for. So this is the most open type of grant that I've ever seen come from FAA. So we'll use that. I'll work with the finance director and the city manager to figure out the best way to disperse those funds. But what we're looking for, the items that we cut from CIP was a new pickup truck with a plow and a new bush hog to replace our old one. So that's what that sixty-nine grand will go to help towards. So you can see from that list what was in main that a lot of airports, the smaller general aviation airports, it's just a standard number. And then it was really focused on the commercial service airports. You could see Presque Isle got over a million, the Jetport got over twelve million, and Rockland somehow got almost eighteen million. So very curious what kind of projects they're doing up there. It's going to be pretty good. And then, you know, the rest of everybody else, it was just that standard number.
Okay, so questions on this?
Mayor Cody?
Yes.
My question, and I, I'm just wondering if any conversation was had in subcommittee on this. In lieu of using it to fund items that were cut, was there a conversation about using it in to reduce the airport budget itself? Was that explored at all, or is that a possibility? Not that it's a huge dollar amount, certainly, but it would, you know, there's some impact in terms of actually having to go back to taxpayers, I guess.
Yeah, right. Allison?
We could certainly use it for just offsetting operating expenses. Is that something that we wanted to do this fiscal year coming up? We're in the black with everything that's going on, so there actually isn't any taxpayer money that's going to the airport per se with the solar revenues. So we were going to take that opportunity to use it for some CIP expenses that we cut.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Tuttle, I mean, we're only one of the, how many Allison airports in the state that are actually self-sufficient and are black? I think we're only one of the few. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe Bar Harbor still is, but I'm not certain on that.
Right, but we are, right?
We will be in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, which is a major improvement. So like, you know.
Mr. Mayor, Bob Stackpole here. Just throw this out and see, see what happens. And I guess this is more directed towards City Manager Buck to gather his opinion. First of all, I want to say, Allison, I think you're doing a great job up there, and I think it's really fantastic that the airport is revenue-neutral. But I'm wondering if, Steve, if you look into your crystal ball and look at what our potential revenue situation for the city is going to be next year, would seem to me this sixty-nine thousand dollars doesn't have to be spent, let's say by June thirtieth or something this year, or encumbered by June thirtieth. And could it be held over for a little bit in case there's some significant revenue shortfalls as we move into the next fiscal year?
Yes, it could be held over, although this can't go to general fund. This is money that's coming from the FAA. It has to be used for airport purposes and airport purposes only. I'd also would like to strongly suggest that it's more easily applied towards capital equipment improvements. That's what this money is there for as opposed to offsetting operational expenses.
Allison, just a question to you. Now, these are things that were removed from your budget that you'd like to spend this money on. Are they things that you're going to need in the future?
Yes. So the pickup truck would replace a twenty-year-old pickup truck that we currently plow with. It's an old diesel. And then the bush hog, I believe the bush hog is a nineteen-ninety-one. So that thing has seen some acres, for sure. I think the guys were estimating there's probably at least five thousand hours on it. And it's to the point where it's been completely rebuilt multiple times, and we've probably put as much money into it as, almost as it would cost to buy a new one. And we could easily do that all again in the three years from now if we end up keeping it, you know, kicking that can down the road.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess there's, depending on how you look at it, there's potential savings to the taxpayer there because those are things that are not going to have to be paid for in the, in the future. But, you know, I leave the open question of saving the revenues. You know, I think we all share concerns about what next fiscal year is going to look like for cities. But I'll leave it there. We can, we can move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, just a quick question for Allison. Is, because I have no clue about what your equipment's used for at the airport. Is that equipment necessary for clearing around the new solar project? So once the panels are in, I imagine some maintenance is going to still need to happen around that. Is that piece of equipment necessary for that job?
Yes. So that will be instrumental in maintaining the fence line. When we had the whole fence line cleared and designed, it's clear fifteen feet on either side of it, all the way around, and a lot wider in a lot of areas to keep the foliage and all the brush from growing up there. So this bush hog would be used to maintain and mull around that fence line. And then it's used when you drive by the airport and you see all those big open fields. At this point, with the solar project, we've now cleared additional hundreds of acres. So, yeah, so there's, you know, over ten miles of fencing now and hundreds and hundreds of acres that will be used for.
So I guess my point to the council would be is, is I'd rather make that investment now instead of maybe next year when, if there is some fiscal hardships being caught without the funds to be able to do this.
I agree, Luke.
Okay. But, you know, I think the message to probably the same Andrew, there's concern going forward, and I think it's probably warranted as far as, you know, spending and fountain money, particularly as it relates to COVID-19 sort of reimbursement funds. You know, let's, if there are some, let's make sure they go into offset costs and everybody's expenses are going up. So-
I could make a suggestion. The bush hog is about, it's less than twenty thousand dollars, I think was the last quote, the most recent quote that we got. So, and that's the more immediate need since, of course, the mulling season's going to be coming up. So we could expend those funds just for that and then kind of sit on the rest and wait and see. And if we are looking like we're in a good situation as we're getting closer to winter time, when we're going to start needing the pickup truck at that point, then maybe we could expend those funds at that point if the finance director and city manager agree that we're in a healthy financial type of situation.
I think that that sounds, that sounds great. I mean, you know, I think everybody, all departments should take a cautious view of their expenses and finances, things of that nature moving forward and until we've got, you know, six, eight months in the books because, again, you know, if the revenue isn't showing up, it's going to hit across all departments. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Any other questions as relates to the topic? Okay, see none, we'll do the roll call vote. Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Lanning?
Yes.
Counselor Hurley?
Yes.
W. Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Carrie, seven to zero. And last one for Allison. Tonight, nineteen-dash-eight-sixty-one-zero-one, order to authorize the city manager to submit an extension to the Federal Aviation Administration for the temporary non-aeronautical use of airport property for the South Sanford Fire Station. Do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
This isn't a new item. This is a continuation of an existing item. In two thousand thirteen, we filed for a temporary non-aeronautical land use to FAA. This is for the South Sanford Fire Station that sits on airport property. That was good for five years. We were able to avoid extending it for a couple of years because it was actually being used for aeronautical use for a short period of time when Lifelight was in there while they were building their new building. So they're in their new place, and now it's back to non-aeronautical use again. We are actively, as everybody knows, working on the final solution for the fire department to have a different location and a new, a new set of stations. So because of that, what I'd like to do is just extend the non-aeronautical use provision that we already have and request for FAA to just allow us to keep that, keep that going until 2025. And then, of course, the idea would be by 2025, hopefully the fire station doesn't need, the fire department doesn't need to use that fire station any longer, and we can revert it to aeronautical use. The whole non-aeronautical use provision includes fair-market appraisal, and what they came up with for that appraisal back in two thousand thirteen was this four-thousand-three-thirty-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents as an annual lease payment for it. We've never actually formalized that or done anything with it because in the past, the city has subsidized the airport for its operations every year in an amount to exceed that number. So we never had to do that. But if we get to the point, as we're talking about now, where the airport is now financially self-sufficient and is not- financially self-sufficient and is not being subsidized by the city, then this would come into play as part of the budget. So that memorandum of understanding that's attached there, it spells that out, and it's that if we do get to that point, and the amount that we're in the black is more than that four thousand three hundred eighty-seven fifty, then we'll figure out a way to do a transfer, um, so that that can be, you know, quote-unquote "paid" for the, the fire station to exist on the airport. So that's the biggest change of all of it. Other than that, the whole rest of it stays the same. Um, when I spoke to FAA, they said it was fine to just re-up the one from two thousand thirteen without having to go through the expense of doing a whole new appraisal and all of that kind of stuff. So that's a, a pretty big bonus, um, that we're able to lock that in and, and keep it that way till twenty twenty-five.
Okay, questions on this? Okay, see none, we'll do the roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
February Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. And lastly tonight, nineteen dash eight seventy-three dot zero one, or, and approved as city financials for the third quarter of fiscal year nineteen twenty. You have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Champlin, are you with us?
I am, Mayor Cody, how are you?
I'm doing great, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Um, the attached financial reports are intended to provide the council with an update on the city's financials activity for the first nine months of the fiscal year. The following represents a summary of major transactions most affecting the end of the month statement for the end of the quarter. The third quarter ends nine months of operations under the current municipal budget, having a target of seventy-five percent for an annualized budget administration. The revenue summary report, including real estate and personal property tax collections, is closing at eighty-two percent, um, right on projection year-to-date. The expense summary report is closing with total expenditures of twenty-point-eight million dollars, including encumbrances of roughly one-point-eat-four million dollars, or seventy-eight percent, just three-point-five percent over target year-to-date. The budget has proven to be an accurate reflection of the city's total cost of service provisions. Uh, the year-to-date budget reports were run by Department, Organizational Code, Object Code, Revenue, and CIP. Uh, my general observations for this timeframe is as follows. The third quarter expense report, as I just stated, closed at seventy-eight percent. At this point, there are no significant unbudgeted or unanticipated expenditures to report, and all variants are shown on the attached reports. The third quarter revenue report closed at eighty-two percent, which is where the city should be with property taxes billed into installments. This report does include real estate taxes and personal property tax collections, and is a relative position for this time of year, given the fact that we are closed to the public as of March nineteenth. The net cash position year-to-date is a positive eighteen-point-five million dollars. The net cash position is a balance sheet indication of the relative position of the budget for a given point in time, and is not a full indication of a year-end balance. Overall, in relation to the adopted budget nine months in, there have been no material concerns noted for just the third quarter. Staff will continue to closely monitor all areas to ensure that any variance is recognized in a timely fashion, and appropriate mitigation action is taken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, you know, one of the things that came up during the week is, uh, someone reached out to me with some current concerns about municipal budgets. Um, I, I see he's joined us this evening, welcome. Um, and, and I did start poking around at various articles and different things online, and, and certainly municipal governments are concerned as it relates to, um, not so much their, their expenses, but, but their revenue. Um, you know, there's rep- revenue generators that aren't generating revenue currently. Uh, things like the ambulance, for example, the, um, much of, you know, clerk's office, uh, some of that is, is slow or, and or, you know, not happening or delayed. Um, so there, there is likely this pent-up demand for, you know, registrations, things of that nature, but there's also very few new car sales. Um, maybe housing starts are questionable really moving forward. Um, you know, and then there's the question about, are people actually gonna pay the tax bill? So they're gonna be, be in a position, um, in, in the quarter to actually send us a check? So I, I know that there was a lot back and forth with the city manager and, and, and Ms. Champlin about, you know, what are our finances and things of that nature? So impression I'm gathering, I guess from, from this report and the other back and forth throughout the week, is that so far that there's, there hasn't been a noticeable sort of thing to be concerned about. Is that generally the impression?
Are you gonna answer this, or do you want me to take this?
Yeah, I, I can, I can jump in there. So a- as I've indicated to you, Mr. Mayor, and, and to, and to others on, on the council that I've spoke with in this interim period of time, um, there being, you know, a matter of, of another ten weeks to operate under this, this fiscal year, um, I'm not concerned with this particular fiscal cycle. We, we have the ability to absorb, uh, the impacts that we're seeing currently, uh, but the emphasis on what we're seeing currently is all predicated on not an, an extended pro- prolongment of this, this COVID-nineteen response. So if, if we're to open up by mid-May, I think we're still in great position. Uh, we will see, so the, the majority of the impacts that we're going to see are not in this current fiscal year that we have. We have, uh, the ability to absorb some of these delayed revenues. We have an extensive amount of staff that's unfunded, that's not, not, uh, employed under the Public Works Department. We have a number of employees that have been out on income protection, uh, and or workers' comp that's hitting our payroll to a far lesser extent, and we've seen a reduction in expenses overall because of the COVID-nineteen period of time that we're in currently. So pursuant to all of those reviews, we have the ability to absorb the impacts that we're currently seeing. Uh, I think our focus is on what we're anticipating for the next fiscal year. That's where, uh, people's concerns should lie. Uh, in speaking with Ronnie earlier today, she has an excellent statement, if, if, uh, you care to have that read into the record here this evening, that really, I think, summarizes why I'm less concerned about this current fiscal year, more concerned about impacts in the next fiscal year, if, emphasis on if, the pandemic response continues for much, much longer than what we're currently anticipating.
Okay.
So Ronnie, would, would you care to go into that, that, uh, the statements that you had prepared earlier today? I think that really does an excellent job in summarizing, uh, why, why I made the comments that I have.
Certainly, if Mayor Cody would like me to do that, I will.
Absolutely.
The city's budget relies on property collections for approximately thirty-six percent of its total general fund budget needs, with state aid to education representing another forty-three percent. We believe that neither revenue source is significantly at risk in this fiscal year with ten weeks remaining. Real estate taxes and personal property taxes are both currently at ninety-four percent collected. Many homeri- owner, owners in the city of Sanford pay property taxes through mortgage escrow accounts. Excise tax collections, collections on vehicles are projected to generate just under five percent of total revenues, which are currently showing seventy-one-point-three percent collected, which is nine percent lower than projected at this time. Main revenues, uh, main state revenue sharing contributes slightly less than two-point-two percent of the total revenue requirement for this fiscal year. We are at eighty-four-point-five percent collected as of today, and feel that we meet our projection of one-point-nine million dollars, um, and will meet our projection of one-point-nine million dollars in April, May, and June. Both of these revenue sources could potentially be affected by COVID-nineteen, as they relate to vehicle purchasing and statewide sales and income tax collections by the state. With respect to main state revenue sharing payments, on April second, the Treasurer of the State of Maine offered guidance to municipalities that it would be prudent to assume that main state revenue sharing payments beginning in July twenty twenty will be less than what was previously projected. The city recognizes such risks to revenue projected receipts, but in our judgment, such reductions would not materially affect overall financial position, and more likely to be generally experienced as delays in collections than actual revenue losses. The city continues to monitor revenue collection, and has identified savings within the operating budget due to a combination of things, the largest coming from the numerous unfilled positions, employee benefits, and insurance, as well as long-term outages due to workers' compensation and income protection. We will continue to closely monitor all areas of the budget to ensure that any variance are recognized immediately and mitigating actions taken.
Okay, thank you for that. I really appreciate the perspective. I, I like the percentages, is that, can, can you make that available to the council just so I, for our background?
Absolutely.
Or, or Ronnie, thank you so much. Okay, so obviously, you know, I, I think that, that the flare is up, we're a little bit concerned as far as, you know, next year, um, I would say that it's on the minds of the, the council, it's on the mind, the minds of the public. I mean, clearly, we're in uncharted waters here as far as how long this goes, and, and sort of the, the overall, like, the condition that it creates. Um, so if we can just obviously keep an eye on, on, on this, and if we need to, if we need monthly updates from you, that it may come to that, but, uh, let's hope not, let's hope we get beyond this really quickly. Um, any questions from the council as it relates to the financial report?
Just, just one to, to yours about the property tax collection. Um, maybe Ronnie can answer this, or Steve, um, the, when someone has, uh, in an escrow with all of these mortgage forgiveness programs and, um, you know, uh, really not being able to foreclose on people, uh, almost encouraging them, you know, not to, to pay right now, which I get, uh, 'cause it's hard to do. Does that include their escrow? So would, would property taxes be inevitably delayed due to that? I mean, is that something that you can almost count on?
We're, we're not seeing the delay, uh, as, as far as the current situation that we're in. Um, any mortgage holder is not going to forego their position on this property by, uh, an unpayment of property tax, uh, where subsequently would come under lien, and then ultimately the lien couldn't mature, so, um, re- whether the individual's making their monthly payment or not, the, the financial institutions are not going to forego the payment of tax.
Great, thanks. Okay, anything further from the council?
A quick question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, Ronnie, do you have any concern about the state's last payment on the school side about EPS? I'm wondering if where students haven't been in school, if they might cut back. Arguably, there has been some expenses, but I don't imagine what's been expended, um, is at the same level that it would be if the students were in school.
Joe, I emailed the school business manager this afternoon and asked her if she had heard anything, uh, from the state regarding the education subsidy for the end of the year. She said that they hadn't heard anything to date. Um, and she said she was on a call today and still no word, um, about their subsidy being cut. She said that she had a gut feeling, this is only her feeling, that if for some reason, um, they get money from the CARES Act, they may reduce the subsidy by that amount, but that was just her opinion.
Okay, thank you, Ronnie.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment on that further?
Yes.
Um, so I, i- in my viewpoint, um, for whatever the reduced overhead cost may be to the school department, and if they should continue to see, to receive the same level of, of EPS, that could give them a carryforward that we were not anticipating, and that could be one of the elements that we would look for, uh, first and foremost, as far as mitigating impacts to the next fiscal year budget.
Yeah, and I, I did think of that as well. I guess the other question from a revenue perspective, I know that Acton, um, sends their, their wins to Sanford. Is that, do you know if that money is already all in house and collected, or is it a quarterly payment as well? And I guess is, is that payment at all in jeopardy?
Uh, that I cannot, uh, comment on without, uh, talking with Superintendent Nelson first.
Okay, and I would assume, since the kids are still being educated, there'd be some reimbursement there, but again, whether they're not actually going to a, you know, facility and things of that nature, is there, is expectation that the money would not be quite as, you know, same as it used to be?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, that is a contract, so they're, they're contracted. I understand what you're saying, but, uh, it, it is, it is a contract, so to not pay it would be violating the contract.
Okay. Perfect, just trying to cover all the bases.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, so anything further from the council?
Well...
All right, so keep us posted, uh, Ms. Champlin, thank you for the update. Thank you for your patience hanging in there. Uh, we're gonna do a roll call, acceptance of the, the information that's presented. Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
February Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero, thank you, uh, thank you, Ronnie. Okay, uh, we'll go into council member comments. Council Hans...
Uh, yes, just two for me. One, uh, wanna extend, uh, and it's been done before, but thanks again to Steve and, uh, Ian and all the folks that are, uh, UWSSRT, but the folks making it possible for us to do these meetings via Zoom, as well as even, um, maybe more so the subcommittee meetings, which I feel like the participation level from the community, as well as even myself, you know, to attend subcommittee meetings is higher, and I, I hope that in some fashion in the future, we can continue to integrate some kind of, um, Zoom or online access to, to some of those meetings as well. But just a big thanks, and, and not all communities are, um, in that same, uh, space that we're in in terms of being able to do that, so. And then the other thing is just, um, that I read an article that, uh, I thought was really great, and I think we should all keep in mind, um, as we continue through this COVID-nineteen process, about the fact that, you know, we're, we're all in the same storm, so to speak, and some of you might have seen this, but we're all in very different boats. So, you know, yes, we're all, um, you know, trying to shelter in place and keep social distancing, but that looks and feels differently to everybody, so, you know, empathy, compassion, extra kindness, um, really goes a long way, especially in these days. So, um, that's it for me.
Hey, thank you. Council Stackpole?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Council Hanselman, for those comments. I think they're, they're very appropriate. Um, uh, my, my, uh, you know, people probably know I live down near Number One Pond, uh, and, uh, I wa- I walk down there quite often. My wife and I walk down there, take the dog down there for a walk. One thing I've noticed, and I, I wanna generalize this to other parks and places where people may be walking, I've noticed an increase in, uh, just plain old trash down there. It's, it's not, uh, you know, disgusting trash all over the place, that's not my point, but I do see more trash in the bushes, left on the, the grass, and, and things like that. So I would, I would ask everyone who's using the public spaces, uh, to please, you know, uh, kind of carry in, carry out. There is one trash receptacle, uh, down there that, uh, has a trash bag in it, is being, uh, emptied, uh, regularly by, by the city. Uh, maybe there should be more, I don't know, uh, that's a, a, a topic of discussion for another time, but there is one down there, uh, please, please use it. And I would have to say, please clean up after your dog, because I am seeing, uh, a definite increase, uh, in, uh, we'll, we'll just be kind and say dog waste, uh, down there. And once again, if it's happening down near the pond, which is a very, very, very nice place for all of us to walk and enjoy, it's probably happening, uh, in other areas in town, so please be, uh, considerate. I certainly appreciate the soc- social distancing, and I hope everybody gets out, uh, and gets some fresh air and goes for a walk in our public places.
Perfect, thank you. Council Tuttle?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I wanna, uh, thank, uh, uh, folks in the fire department, police department, people who are in the health field during this crisis, having, uh, been involved in it for over forty, uh, years myself, uh, these people are truly the heroes, and I'd recommend that we would put down the signs and put on the mask, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lanigan?
So I just wanna say with so many negative things, and, and like Counselor, uh, Hanselman said, there's so many different boats people are floating in, I've got some actual positives out of this whole thing, is, uh, one is the environment is, uh, cleaning up. Uh, if you look around, there's a lot of, uh, great environmental impacts that are happening out of this, so that's a plus. Uh, two, we've got students learning in a whole new way that, uh, might open up horizons for the future on bringing this type of learning, um, into the normal classroom, where they can have visiting professors from all around the world, and really expand, because now we know it does work, and, uh, you can learn from a distance. And then the other thing is, is just, you know, when you're out in town and you're driving around and you just see families are spending so much time together, and it just looks like American, good old home, American, you know, apple pie here now. And it, it's just really, I know, we have to do it safely, and we have to do it at a distance, and, and we're doing that, but it just, it's really nice seeing the community kind of alive, and people really enjoying the natural resources that we have here. So I just wanted to put out a couple positive things that I've seen, so thank you.
Thank you. Council Hurley?
I just thought I'd update people on how the maters, they, they have not made any decisions yet about the season at the end of, uh, week. They are, uh, I think they're teething, teetering on the edge of, uh, canceling, which is what the maters are expecting, but we won't know for a few more weeks yet. Um, it was... But that might be the direction it's going based on, it's going to be hard to find host families in the middle of all of this. So, and then I, when we get to future agenda items, I think letting people know that we're going to be discussing Memorial Day and the Fourth of July this week at Property Subcommittee, or next Tuesday at Property Subcommittee might interest a few people who join into our meeting.
Absolutely. Attorney Mayor Hansel?
Anything that I would have commented has been said by my colleagues who are far brighter than I am, so thank you.
Well, there you go. All right. I'm not sure what I want to say. I get lots of emails from people who are concerned about behavior of other people, and I can tell you that I can do very little to change people's behavior. So, you know, if you're concerned about people's approach to going to the grocery store, or people walking down the street, or people, you know, approaching one business or another, then you yourself should probably avoid those places. That's all I can tell you. That may sound insensitive, but for the same, you know, accolades a few people gave about people being out and about, there's other people that think that that's a terrible idea. So there's absolutely an increased number of people around Sanford on foot, which is great for the most part, but again, I think there's an uncertainty of, shouldn't they just be home? So I guess that's the unknown, and I can tell you, as the mayor of a municipality, I can't really do a thing about it. You know, again, as insensitive as that sounds, I can't control people's behavior. So, you know, you might be getting sort of insensitive sounding responses from me, but that's just the way it is. If you have a problem, you should call the governor, because she's making the rules at this point. So that's what I got. Stay safe, be well, everybody. I, I, I'm hopeful for, I continue to watch City Manager's numbers that he gives out every day. I'm looking for that trend. The trend to me looks like it's down, particularly in Maine. I can't speak of those, hopefully we're over that hump and to the plateau soon and hopefully be all behind us. So that's what I got. Any future agenda items?
Mayor Cody?
Yes.
So just to go backtrack to the marijuana industry, and I don't know where it's approached, if I should just chat with City Manager Buck and kind of go from there, but just want to look into whether or not some kind of funding stream can be set up for youth, you know, education when it comes to substance abuse and marijuana, youth as part of the industry being an active part of our community and their willingness to do something like that.
Okay. Any other future gen items?
I do, Mr. Mayor, if I could, we kind of touched on this a little bit. So I'd like to talk, I don't know if it'd be appropriate in the Economic Development Subcommittee or not, about broadband and, you know, maybe speeding up or looking at increasing the urgency on getting, you know, either fiber to the home or better bandwidth to the home, even if it's working with other partners in the community. I notice just, and I live pretty close to Main Street, bandwidth can be a real horrible thing when you've got, you know, someone working from home and trying to upload large files, and teleworking seems like a thing that's going to be here for a while, like it or not, and so I just didn't know if it's something that we could, you know, do, it'd be beneficial for the city and also something for growth in the future.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other future gen items? I have one for the Public Safety Subcommittee. There was some back and forth this week in regards to the stretch on Lebanon Street, Route 202, as it pumped off of Mount Hope in towards the old General Lumber Building. Just the rate of speed that people are coming down the hill and then suddenly hitting the twenty-five mile an hour zone there, it really became problematic for the neighbors in that area as far as, you know, semi-tracked trail trucks with their air brakes, things of that nature, and just, you know, people flying down the hill going, you know, sixty, seventy miles an hour, then suddenly hitting this twenty-five zone.
Mr. Mayor, I'd agree on that, and it's also happened, happening going up the other way up the hill.
So if we could just have Public Safety take a look, you know, some of the ideas that were banged around already were, you know, improved signage and, you know, increased detail from the police department, things of that nature. I know that they sit obviously a lot at the General Lumber, but I think the concern is the space before that, that when you come down the hill, and, you know, I think we all witnessed it, if you come down that hill, it's a high-speed zone, and then suddenly it goes into a very slow-speed zone. So if we can just look at that from a public safety perspective, that'd be great.
We can do that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, any other future gen items? Okay, long evening.
Tom? Just quickly, are we going to be inviting some of the veteran, someone from the Veterans Organization to our meeting on Tuesday for the discussion on Memorial Day?
It's, I suppose they could be invited. Yeah, I don't, I, do you need to invite them, or are they invited?
Well, I think they should be invited, because we actually don't put on Memorial Day, they do.
Right, so, I mean, speaking to that, I don't know that it's even a discussion that's applicable to the city council. I mean, it's, what they're proposing or the current parade would be against the governor's orders currently.
I know.
So I don't know what there is to discuss.
Well, can I?
We should be making an announcement for them, whether it's going to be on or not, that's what I'm thinking.
But I mean, it's, I mean, making an announcement is one thing, but I mean, having a lengthy discussion about right or wrong is really not up to us, from my view. But City Manager Buck, want to?
Yeah, yes, yes, I think good. So I had a phone conversation with Jim Bachelor, Batcholder today, so we had the VFW American Legion. I apologize to all of the veterans out there. There's another organization, so we had the three major organizations that were a part of the Memorial Day Parade, as well as, we also talked about placement of flags. So we talked through, no different than a lot of us, looking for direction from the governor as far as what will be taking place by May twenty-fifth. So we don't have that guidance yet, so the assurance that I gave them was that we would circle back for next Monday, April twenty-seventh, you know, hopefully hear something from the governor this week. If not, we're going to regroup, no, excuse me, it's actually, I think it's Tuesday, next Tuesday, at three o'clock, we're going to circle back on the twenty-eighth. So there's that piece. They really have no contingency plan as far as the parade is concerned, because normally if it's a rain day, they'd go inside to the memorial gym. If we can't gather outside, we certainly can't gather inside. So there's no contingency as far as the parade is concerned. If it's a no, it's a no, it doesn't happen. The other element that really is close to everyone's heart is placement of flags in the cemeteries. There's approximately two thousand veterans' graves that are represented here in the city of Sanford-Springvale. They have a logistic, logistical program worked out for that, but it doesn't work as far as the current restrictions that we have in place and the social distancing. So I offered to aid them in the communications aspect, if they could provide me with a better understanding on how that's been done in the past, the use of the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and the various volunteers that come on a regular basis, because it's not simply a matter of getting untrained or unfamiliar people to the graveyard, it's a matter of physical coordination and such. So we talked through the timeframes today as to the latest date that that can be achieved. So I've offered them city assistance on working those logistics out, but we're all in this pause, we're in a place of, we don't know timing yet. So we easily can extend the invitation, and I think it'd be very beneficial for them to be in the next Property Subcommittee meeting to talk about these matters. They themselves are really at a state of not knowing what to do right now, so any assistance that we can give them would be very much appreciated, I believe.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to suggest that we were not trying to give them assistance. I guess I don't want to get in a situation where they think it's up to us.
Yeah, no, they're not under any misconception there at all, so, yeah, no, but it was a matter of what can we do as a city, what can we do as a community? Even if the parade has to be off, what can we do to make sure that the veterans are appropriately honored, that the flags are out there on the graves?
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, may I, really briefly, in response to City Manager Buck's comment about the flags, I'm just offer up this thought, and I'd be happy to talk further, but the Backpet Program and other nonprofits providing services in town to folks have accomplished that successfully in part by using household units. And I don't know how this could work for the veterans, but potentially a household unit, which would include like a trained, if you will, Boy Scout or Girl Scout or somebody, for example, would take a shift in a certain number of flags, and though, you know, obviously the household unit, I can work closely with my family members, I can not worry about six-foot distance, I can get a whole lot done when I'm volunteering if I'm with my household unit. So again, it's worked really well for some other nonprofits, and I wonder if that could be a solution for, you know, getting flags out to honor our veterans, so just a thought to share.
Yes, thank you. I think one of the issues that was expressed to me today in talking through this with the Veterans Associations that were on the phone conference today, A, we had a Zoom conference, and they all showed up outside the city door, really not understanding that Zoom was, you know, in this format. So we conquered that, got the meeting going. When I asked them for, you know, how many veterans in each cemetery, well, there really wasn't a strong knowledge of that, there's just so much paperwork that's in the hands of multiple, in the possession of multiple hands, different organizations, that the overall coordination has worked well over these years, because everybody has a small piece, but now that we need to bring it together to aid in the logistics, they really don't have that. So they're working on that currently, because I offered, it's hard for me to give you assistance in planning and communications and getting people in the right place if I don't even know what needs to be done in each place. So that was a lot of the conversation today. So they're pulling that together for us so that we can circle back on Tuesday. Yeah, actually, we can start that on Property Sub as well.
Okay, fair. So we'll take care of that on Tuesday, we'll start those discussions, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more to come as it relates to Memorial Day and the associated activities. Anything else for future gen items? All right, well, thanks, everyone, for the time this evening. A lot of people actually hung in there until the end, and I appreciate your hanging in with us, and if nothing else, we have some committee meetings on Tuesday, schedules will be on our website, and we'll be meeting again in two weeks, okay? Have a great night, everyone, be safe, and we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Yeah, you also.
Thank you.